Quite good thing you go bow. On his swing, on his rain. He no less of one about what he have. Eh 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 we pay. See no battle or. Eh they get on the corner. Me actually that in the morning. So tell our poor one, I know. The bad nature there. And tell our few young. Emma Billu, um eh Jema Billu. Only if you know, you know, tell me your boy, eh boy. Emma Billu, I'm a few, I'm a Bill. Um Emma Billu. Um oh dear, who's a Jena, Emma Billu. Eh they're gonna be alive, see, more she. They're gonna be alive, see free. Eh Sherry, Ilu, see I'm with me Nigeria. Ilu to give me play, Bobo, I gotta gotta. See, I'm on, I got to share there. I be seeing one like you're a free. And I know we play. Nigeria right now is a jungle country. We want that more we play. The country is being run as a jungle nation. It only we play. O see, o feel. O see, o go, I got to bang back together. Eh I want to be a man, I should be. One fair, she'll be one thing about ya. He did, I don't feel fair, she'll be about ya, you be play. Oh my, we add it there. They gave you my car, oh Jerry. That's shaking me, that's by twelve one. Me, oh, oh, I buy you. I buy toy, you go to T one. Oh, we play. What in dro de wa, I'm not a bashipah. Oh, I'm gay. I'm not a bashipah, oh, I'm gay. I'm not a bashipah, oh, I'm gay. And it for you, D A G. Eh, oh, she let me play. What do you read to what? I saw, see, I buy you.
Our full learning to us who are there. And he said, we need to break this Nigeria up to save life. We need referendum as opposed to election. People that if they're better. Um, or say no, I go, I read video, I read tissue new part. I do not have a terrorist train. Attack. Over two hundred people, souls, vessels, life, who are wasted and killed. I want in your repertory, you want to work on theory. Nigeria government, oh, this is all, we are allowed. What did the cloud, but I can't go. Eh, transportation minister. Rotina, she did not see that so pay one idiot over three billion. That is shit camera. What is so great? People go Nigeria, I'm a donate. That don't call German, the King of Nigeria had to need to go to program. That was medical services, anti-medical care. I want to watch you are seriously wounded. Many of the eh victims, those who on the daily basis, so you are going back. We are going back, so therefore we need to break it up to save lives. Actually, I mean. I do not states in Nigeria has over ten. Different military. Parasitars headquarters or headquarters of different parasites. Yet numerous attack. No shell, any card on a daily basis. Land all day, that should go. If you are a terrorist, one or a key military army base, it had not over twenty. Nigeria army personnel, they are murdered, slaughtered, killed. Picture what I'm actually what I did during. Actually, I like. Um, I today, they are not taking me, they are coming. I see too, especially our power, but I keep. I keep it sa. But I will not see that no eh, oh, do I UK, I think you're there, you saw. I'm a business, my question, well, any. So as soon as I imagine, um, yeah, I'm a bit of a term machine, also thirty. It got to you, that typical you. So we come after quickly, it's pretty short, some of these videos. I get to solve, yeah, my grand old. See, oh, Shelley, just this week alone, did you want Nigeria? I'm going to go in Nigeria, go by your mother, you're bad, I know, sign petition, let them break it up. To save lives. Did you see my talk on you, wow, that's a lorry. I did really, I need you, I bet that is just last Sunday, but you pass a car. Oh, I know, you put your body, you're tired, you're sorry, you know what? You want to wash soup. The king, you know, then, Lord, you, we have a very hard team, oh, I'm so Shelley. We are one right way, we do, we do. Oh, yeah, oh, come, we want, yeah, we have sickness. We said, oh, I'm such a, I figure, all of our, I don't say, I tell you. She don't want, she will. But I'm a boy, he been here, I'm only below, we just alone. We need to break it up to save life. One of the delay, we don't want no more Nigeria. I G R internally generally, they generate revenue, you say that the country that. Generate, he said not to build hostage suit. Need that in ministry, just for both states. He said not to buy enough ambulance. So every citizen of Auguste, five, ten minutes drive radius. She will call Rebecca, Lino, it only people, what you go, state in general, I read. Full army government of Nigeria alone, controller. Sherry, you don't have to be. Your urban nation agitator. Before one Nigeria happen to you. And it's all Nigeria, yeah, over, I should you, but I'm sure. Nigeria law, I could see, oh, one Nigeria law, I could see, I knew, oh, wow. And you the one, you can tell that's agitation, he, other man, I keep on, I, okay, oh, come, I know, oh, come, you know, I guess. None of news, go say, you know. United Kingdom government. One one, but our citizens, once more, one in Nigeria, oh, deceased stop. From this city, seven northern Nigeria state in Nigeria because of terrorism. They're bad, they're bad, they're bad, obviously, you are your own. We show you, can you call? And America, it's email. Oh, just it is in America. Oh, Jeff, permanent resident, America. Oh, Jeff, what family, already, America, oh, Jeff, Rick, the America. Oh, Jeff, that was America, oh, yeah, that. See, oh, but in me, life insurance in America. You dare not tell your life insurance carrier or coverage. That you are going to visit Nigeria. Oh, so far, wala, oh, so far, wala. Yeah, I'll come, go, Jeff, I get to, I go, Jeff, you're a national agitator. To buy the life insurance, America, to buy, Jack, the life, to buy the travel, oh, you know, so. Everything on your back, she had in Nigeria, wala. So why does so far, the women, the wife, so far, life insurance, eh, oh, travel, was in Nigeria. You be to a devastating, so. One ma automatically, it immediate effect. One must cancel. Life insurance, any. The one more way, oh, nori, who, he, in Nigeria, there is no two ways to it. As an American living in America with big car, if you had life insurance in America, confirm the late, most often. If life insurance, I think, I know where. Although, you can, I want, oh, lowly pastor, I'm calling you to call on, on family. So by the life insurance, Nigeria, to life insurance, career, near America. To life insurance, for great people, where carry, ever more, go, obviously, Nigeria, it's time to your Macan's life insurance, any. One Nigeria, I lose, I give you. Because of terrorism act. Because of insecurity Nigeria, we need to break it up to save life. Oh, the character, um. Eh, Nigerian Christian leaders, to our, all our Christian leaders in Nigeria. And take back, yeah, yeah, I just last Friday, um, April one. Oh, the God, God, ballistic, nuclear, don't go social media. She is, she will be popular, it was outspoken. Although you prefer our G O, but I, you know, to what, yeah, pepper, pepper. I shall, it about you, who she shall, oh, to you, what? You feel, oh, my, my, no, yes, me, I'll learn, definitely. Abba, I think so, so, yeah, I think so, you are there. For she bad, you pass on the lab, eh, you, let it, you know, see, pastor, yeah. Who's she showing, eh, dollar. From call, call my G A, I'm a boy, eh, that you are the person, I see, or special, I see. Key. Oh, she bad, you to go, I go. I buy the bounce, so, oh, yeah, bounce, so, oh, oh, I want to get my, I was, you know, you, well. I appreciate it, but I see. Baba. G O, I, they boy, eh, sa. What if it all, that look, eh, sa. Free uninterrupted ticket access, sa, pass. Let me see, I saw, oh, so, so is, oh, you, if you. I'd be see. You know, if that, oh, that look, eh, oh, you, if you. Go, go, Bush, you long, you know, you. About one, I should see. I should, I should, eh, eh, two of me, two minutes. Give me back a show on video, yeah, they're nice. They sure. Eh, many years, you see, maybe, Baba, they boy, eh. Pass on to the back, carry. Eh, Jack, they play, they play, they love, I'm on. If I tell for. They got see, I am protesting against the. Good luck, Jonathan government, we go, Fararo, you, oh, terrorism, act, what? This is terrorism, I don't want, I need that, Jonathan, eh, good luck. Oh, the time, stand you, I, he, he got it, when he played, I love, I'm paying, eh, Jack, they are telling him. I want money in Nigeria. Eh, Jack, eh, we need to break Nigeria up to save lives. Pass us, we play video, won't be on my job. Why not now, which more than double the attack, pastor? Gee, I, they boy, of, deep, Christian church, oh, I can't wait. Bishop boy, you, they call financial, I can't wait. Pass on to the back, carry of that, I really, I said, yeah, I can't wait, yeah, I want money. Doctor, look, oh, yeah, of eh, what if I, eh, look at, oh, gee, I can't wait. Pass on, come, we, you, keep alive, eh, yeah, that came on. I see, boy, that get it, so. My dear pastor, Allah, they, eh, I'm a product, I'm a member, and then, oh, they, 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 so. Christ apostolic church worldwide. My dear president, Pastor Allah, they, eh, president of state worldwide. Eh, we are all, we are traditionally, that's our, oh, this is why, eh, we want to order. I think, oh, God, spell of money, it's all, eh, very, oh, all over, it's all. Eh, very, oh, all over, it's all. We need to break Nigeria up to play, to save life, eh, that is, I, I want video, you shot, shot me, oh, wait, three minutes. Victoria, I said, oh, uh, I'm a worship, I'm a Victoria, I see, cause. Papa, pani, sa.
No mesi fo aweni yowaké bawa tony molasi. Eh ki ololo ba ki osituboma roini okua tajbara. Ki elefitu koyele yoruba dele liri. Ita egbedani ke ma shi she la sheti. Ke ma si she kusono be fe. Oni ne pa ejo ti epe si le ejo. Ni epe le ekiti ati ni epe le osho. Latarie eh idiboi epe le eh majeditun bo. Tiwa yeni aybe ti esbe. Ejo ba relaidi itarudapo. Ri relaidi tarudapo ri man po relaidi Nigeria. Location confusion. Ye to olosi ilé ejo. Wepe la ojo. Eh we abado fe ti odo nineteen ninety nine to yet in Nigeria. Eh abado fe ofe gi. Ofe fe eh awudu eh oni. Idori nokosun ti ojo. Kofyo kesi eh idiboto fe wae konfagile ke ma shi wae. Eh iberi akokoti akoko fe be ni wepe. Eh ejo iti wa ni le ejo. Okoni fo ololo ati ya onile. Ati ya onile. Eh itenshe elero wepe eh. Milé ejo tilé da ejo ye wepe eh matibo. Ri ejo ba Nigeria wo kintele ofiyo. Oda di po wanti fi bakonole ni kekere. Itenshe oley da ololo oko. Iberi elake jin wepe. Ni asikuti ebe jo eba fe wae. Abadu ololo jo ebe jo no. Itenshe eh webe sa olero wepe. Awasoro soroa. Bon sa fe fe. Fe le kotu utiri ti alibi lo jo no. Ri pa olero wepe awale ko. Ni alati ba weni yosoronyo. Aw yo tya ya koti ya yo. Apirui be se. Ter wepe alibi lo jo no.
Okay, thank you very much indeed. Eh I've been trying to write everything down. I I I I still understand it. You can take all bearing. You pay. Pay eh almost as if Nigeria will not obey the law. Did I get that right? She she did I interpret that correctly?
Ben ben is.
Alright, sir, alright.
Alright, okay. I I I've had this question a lot. And I try to remind people of something that is called inherent jurisdiction of a high court. Eh meo mba shili trans eh I'm trying to work out. Would you translate this yoruba? But eh high court ni abara tiye. To do abara law or law. Odu abara constitution law. It is only bound by precedent. Charobiri eh high court has an inherent jurisdiction which is above the constitution, is above the law. Even the nineteen ninety nine constitution, sorry. This section six, I think it's section six one or something like that. I can't remember the exact section now. Talks about the inherent, that is, the the acknowledges the inherent powers of 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 a court, of a high court. That eh the constitution does not have any power over. It is it is eh I I don't know whether I I'm explaining it to you, whether you are understanding it. But the court has the power of its own. That is not under the power of the constitution or the power of the law generally unless there has been a precedent. And the thing about this particular case, there's no precedent. Considerary. Now, where the matter, takokon solo Casey, everybody maro be ah. Eh I want long be Casey lossi koto. We were cleverer than that. What we did was this, that our voters, long be Casey lossi koto, the voters themselves. Because they have the voting right. They have the fundamental right in a democracy, in a civilian rule like Nigeria, to have a voting right. And that voting right, they are saying, would be jeopardized, would be infringed if an election was held under a fraudulent constitution. That's the challenge. What Elana is doing is to support them. Is to to be one load of the lossi koto. Elana have a li afuni lowu. And the important thing is this, that this case is not Kisi Elana case, Li case you. This case is a Yoruba case. It's for all of us, all Yoruba. Ebe ti eh media people ti come eh. That this case is not just for eh Elana eh omo du Ilo. This is a Yoruba case. It affects all of us. This is what is called eh 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 public interest eh litigation. Public interest litigation. That is, it affects everybody. And therefore, it is something that we should all, every single Yoruba person. Whether eh you are an individual or you belong to an organization, this is what you should all support. And eh awa Elana UK atisangoo eh the origin, the eh initial amount lawyer lead awati flow yeah. But oh what it ta. So we need more money, we need other other organizations, other people to join us to contribute. Because this case, the first hearing is on the thirtieth of April. Lee Oshobo. She or second year Abby. That's one week, isn't it? Today is uh clearly, you know, today is six. So I'm talking of eh eh seven days time. Is the first, is the first case which is in eh in Oshobo. The second one, the second hearing is on the twenty eighth of April. In eh Ado Kiti, which is three weeks from now. So hopefully, you can generate interest for us so that people will attend. They don't have to do anything, all they have to do is just show up. Show support for the voters of Oshobo, voters of Ado Kiti, who are going to court to to challenge this election. So so that's one of the things that you can do for us. The other thing that you can do for us is is really to eh help us to eh seek funds. Eh to encourage people to donate. We 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 don't want to do crowdfunding. We we want to, we want to think that we Yorubas generally, this is important to us and we are going to contribute money without being eh being forced to 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 do it. For example, Ota Nisi, Arriyala Wa Lati, Lati Collective. And eh the only organization to give one low is eh Yoruba Nation Diaspora eh Mega Rally of USA. They've contributed a large amount of money to help us. So we we hope that you'll be able to convince other organizations to help, to 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 give us money. Eh they they can donate through our website, which is www.eelanauk.org. Or they can donate through our bank account, which is Elana UK Limited. And it's our bank account is at Loiz Bank. And the account number is six nine five seven nine five six two. The salt code is three zero nine eight nine seven. Let me read that again. It's Loiz Bank, it's Elana UK Limited, the account number is six nine five seven nine five six two. And the salt code is three zero nine eight nine seven. So that people can donate. Because this is probably the biggest action that we as Yoruba people are going to take. And I might they can tell our idea. If we win this case, Nigeria as a country is finished. There is nothing more sure than this case to disintegrate Nigeria tomorrow. Because at the end of the Taluma Soipe Constitution, it's not fraudulent. Because how did the constitution come about? I won't have do Salame, what do you call a constitution? They knew, they knew that they needed the the ratification of the people in the referendum, for example. They didn't do it, but they knew they had to do it, they knew it was important. They knew that for the decree twenty four to be a legal document for a civilian government, it had to pass through the referendum, they knew it. That's why they wrote, "We the people." They didn't write, "We the people," people figure, "Oh go." Eh that that that's just it, no. The fraud is the fact that they knew they should have, what they should have done. They didn't do it, they lied that they did it. That's the fraud. That's what is called misrepresentation in law. And if you misrepresent something, anything, it means it is invalid, it is null and void, and it is of no legal effect. That's the phrase that is very important. That if the constitution is fraudulent, if it is a misrepresentation, it has no legal effect. And if it has no legal effect, it means Nigeria has no constitution. And if the country has no constitution, then Nigeria is finished. There's no, I might they got another idea. What what probably was, some of us need to start thinking about is this, what happens next? When the judgment comes and it says, the the nineteen ninety constitution, nineteen ninety nine constitution is null and void. What are we going to do? That's it.
Esare bawaino men fo ishajumide peisa. Kenyoto ma chelle, ti oba soipe eh oda o. Kose ebo, ni epe le osho ati epe le eh ekiti sa. Fe ishajumide Turiya sikowa sa. Ma beno.
All that basis is that there's no constitution, which is what I was saying. If there's no constitution, there's no Nigeria. If there's no constitution, there's no legitimate government. So Burari's government ceases to be legitimate. If there's no constitution, it means you cannot hold a valid election. I mean, that's that's, it's as simple as that. That if there's no constitution, which is what we are saying, Nigeria has no constitution. If there's no constitution, there's no country.
Only kalbu, only kalbu ama bati eloni.
And those who wish to then join together to form Nigeria, they can be doing referendum. We Yorubas want to leave. We don't need to be part of Nigeria. You have a mad Yoruba person, completely out of your rockers, to think that Nigeria is any good for you. You have to be mad. The country does not offer you anything whatsoever, absolutely nothing.
Elana sofe what Nigeria, what I, I want to parolone, what Nigeria be? Kilode tiwa si Nigeria, why are they here? If you love Nigeria so much, go back home. Eh para losi be eku ombe. I might they can anybody to add. Nigeria is bad for the Yoruba, completely bad for us. We don't want to be sharing a country with animals. I say be oni video to answer. These people are, they are animals, they're savages. They're not like us, they live in the sixteenth century. Ah we are not animals, these people are animals. I want you, they have no respect for for themselves. I want my one, one, they can losses to one man. How can you kidnap your own children for ransom? You're kidnapping your own flesh and blood for ransom. This is. Shion. Oh, my brother. Eh ah eh iba uwa pe ki ashifue la ye ke ma. Chilo shiboni Turiya sikowa. Eh la koton, la le yebaba wa. Eh epa wapana omo yoba, ni moro. Eh kumba wan, ni oro yuju. Fo ishajumpe re. Kawafela Turipe amo wepe etinshi wa ala lataro. Eh geke bi ojo re ye oye ke tiwa ni busu ba ye. Eh eti, ah lele ke ti masu. Eh shibofu ishajumpe re eh kumba ba wa ba omo kotu utiri. Ni eh moro, eh man lo lo ni sa, esha sa.
Alright eh 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 moro, that's advice. At this point in time, there are two things we need to support vigorously. There's a petition going on, we need to support it vigorously. Because at least it gives an indication of of our desire, if nothing else. And the second thing we need to support vigorously is the court case. Because the court case can see the end of Nigeria overnight. And we need to support it, whether with money, it's not just money. People who are able to go to the courts on the eh thirtieth of April or the twenty eighth of eh of April, ejo hello. Not to go and demonstrate or anything, you just turn up. Ejo.
Ejo sa, ma beno, ma beno sa. Ejo, anytime she has screen, ejo, I was talk eh, ejo Turiya no.
Show your coribe, she may not be aware, ejo, our host, articles, answer me. Ejo, eh discontinue sharing of your screen. You are sharing screen unknowingly.
Yes, sir, for me, sir, eh shy, you just, ejo, eh discontinue sharing.
Discontinue, go up and stop sharing. Click on the red button, stop sharing.
In left hand side.
Look, look. Yeah, please, thank you.
Alright, sir.
So first, those are the two things eh right now. The the court case is probably the most important action that we Yorubas have taken since nineteen fourteen, actually since eighteen eighty eight, when they allow they signed eh a treaty with with Nigeria. This is eh, this court case is the the most important thing for us as Yoruba people. Because it could end Nigeria overnight. So we need to support it, either with, it doesn't have to be money alone. You know, we can let other people go, you know, spread the word. That's what we want to do, so that we enthuse each other, we let everybody know, this is what we are doing. This is, these are the possibilities and this 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 can be the outcome. And we can get out of this morass, this this quagmire that we have been for a hundred years. Thank you.
Alright, esha go sa. Abupe pupolo ye le konsibava. Kepe o, epefoa, lache lo ololo ba. Eh ibati shodu duati, obama ginoto, awni fe shiawati, lagbala lo eledua. Ah ni duro ishajumpe re konfo yo. Kosi bi ashilepe to laye, eh oni mobo jomo. Atomoto tara hi dadi, ati awa omo ti epi eh ne pasé oro odudu aye. Eh lagbala lo ololo, awni relaidi ye. Pakonon ni eh awani Turipe afe relaidi ye. Ke wa kunike kere Turi ololo. Oni eh look o. Eh. Ni no. Eh oni kagongo shodu, oh ni fo pati leni bujabo. Eh fo pari eh bebe ju. Eh baba, abadu yenda, lacholo ba. Oda la, eh ja fe le sa, sa. Eh eh yowah, ni le eh awo ro ni eti bo, leno baba wae. What is so fe pe eh lo sa impetishan ye o. Eh ati wepe oro tiwa ni le ejo. Ay eh beki abanwadasi. Turi ayba wasimbe bayi, ono ni ayba wadasi eh ololo afuashi. Eh ni baba ba Turiya sikowa, ati lo asiku jino, lo ni agomeji laoru. Odi koda ishajumbe re, lo do twandi, ni relaidi talki. Eh akin pe baba wa omo buriwo. Eh kiwa baba wa soroluri eh eh. Any candidate yoba fe pe wale eh, I want continue pe wale. Turo eh. Eh mu gege ati kalamu ye eh, gege ati kalamu ye. Ke ekwarei bani sorotie eh ma pe wasi eh plus nine zero five three six seven three four one six six five. Obama bo re wa, eh ma wemo bulao ambo. Plus nine zero five three six seven three four one six six five. Oni eroi bani sorotie eh ma pe wasi, I want continue pe wako, ti tuasiku. Ti ama bepe. Eh ye yani le. Eh teba wo jo be, eh ri pe amon kunkon janorun kaka kere. Etiti ku opolo ba wai pe, lo lo ko ojo ko. Beni eshi poko, ono ni eh, plus nine zero five three six seven three four one six six five. One eh. Yo wa woni. Kilode ti, awa kombe soke ni no soroso, awa kombe wale. Shiba sofo wepe kosi ya palare, awasoro soro. Teba wari, anytime soro kubaku be. Si Obama, don't tackle in contact bedani ye. Ke ti ti amo wepe unosi, na ni ya wasoro soro. Ti akura wajo. Ge ge be adeniso in the coat utiri. Ejo eba wa mi utara hi, anytime soronbe ye, odua media. Odua media ejo, eba wa mi utara hi. Okay, esha go. Eh ni Turiye ye ke ma beno lo lo soro. Eh ye kin kesi baba wa omo buriwo. Ki mo sari bawa soroluri eh awo. Ti eh onfe da, ye pe si no garifwa. Ti omo baba ki toye, on soroti bi, on soroto. Eh contact bedani, ta o komban gisoki wa ma fa wale. Eh ye ki baba wa omo buriwo, ki omo busuki, ki omo bawa soro. Ni baba ba, ishajumbe re, Turiya sikoe jo. Omo buriwa sa. Show one be. Eh ba bi ni wepe unsi ni. Turiya bagbe, more. Eh ti on basimbe, eh ye kin pe yami Dr Zabi. Dr Zabi, awan be ma, sheti free ma. San fani tiwa fe la ti soronbi te wa. Dr Zabi. Ya, eh ka le ogo bo le.
Ka le ma.
Ah. Ki bobo wa, kata kata, ni ne lo ko, lenyo jini viki viti, eh ba ti darapomo wa. Eh ite go wa, lo wa lo wa bayi, eh ite tumawu iki li, lecha. Akie ni baba wa eh ki ye ni mama wa. Eh esha go ni wepe di darapomo, eh ba washi aito, ni kuli, eh kodi, ki mesedi eh, koli, karile, kuli karipo. Eh mo ki bobo eh ye lepe mi. Beno mo ki ah, ti on go di dadi, nde nishere, eh ki bobo ah, oni, go di dadi no. Eh ki wa lo si, kati brodami, ikile ma coston, ki so si. Eh moma son kokon wepe oro Yoruba nation ye. Eh kona onko tu boshifuwa fe, roon. Ole di la la, ki baba wa eh bandi, poso wepe akin toye. Bandi je moga, eh lo sa. Eh ba, eh ba, eh la goye. Konso wepe awo shemo. She eh ni tabi eh mi, cha so we, amasow wepe ah, dufo awo sixty million, thanks to you. Choba di la la, ti baba wa shifande bo, koba la o shemo. She so wepe, bo ba shiwo, awo to wa ni eh ilé location for one night, ni koshishera one.
I like.
Akie si ti mo fe ki bobo wa katu ra wasi. Eh otiduwa, otidiya to go. Eh ba mi, eh ma eh ma eh ma be nopele viti, but before ye, me si ni moti bere eh. Eh otidiya to go. Oro ta soye, oro wepe oro nation lele, koshi akin shadagomba le. Ah soroni pa teni kadi, ah soroni pa two ekadi, ah soroni nation lele. Anybody no le, bossi talola, kontu no ulio no ko. Kamafi pro ni no, iti ton de wa mo sheke sheke. Amadi ojueni. Owoko, we ru do ri. Amadi ojueni. Kerelo di ni olala, toso wepe ke, oh tu ni another idea, opinion. Eh jeka tu sai, eh tu jeka lo, bo ti ko ko, eh jeka lo shinko ko. Ah ye ka tu so poteni, because amoi, ito lo ma ke, amisi ni no lo to one le. Baba wa ki toye dele, ni olo, tu voyage la, so se la ri fu.
Atto.
Papa iti da ba la ba. Bobo ade la ba do akar, ka ka da ba, kolonji tapen. Ni mo ba ta le shemo no, ono la ono bi ojuen. And there's no body to perfect. Eh ma ke karile, awa keke wepe, awa la perfect. Eh mini mo fe, eh mini mo le sone, eh mini mo le kontrolene. Eh mi no, eh ma ke ka wola wate. There's no body to le shemistake. Bo you ba ma so wepe eh, mi momo eh ma so, eh eh to ma shemistake, eh ba mi. Oh ni rire, boyi to.
Oh ri okere le.
Eh lo mi dele, oni attitude, so de weke, oh, oh ti je, part of eh, alright. Ti ye yo ko, ode yo. Bobo wa dele, yalele, baba lele, oka wa ko. Ni no le ka fuani suro fuawa. Ole ba la ba da soro, oro ye, ole ma ba wali, ole ma ba wali le sepe, ole ba wali lecha. Oro ye jeka wo, she anja ija yi, sapu ala wani. Tabi ano, odo ri Nigeria no, she wa. Oka wa ta soro, she alo futeni, komba jei no. Tabi anba o no ri. Lu iso be be ne de. Eh oye ki afa o si, oye koshabai, oye ko no tu belo, eh apo, oye ko akapu vai. Eh seleto, oye ko. Oh, eh deka tuwa chele ju. Ra ni repu.
Hello.
Oh no.
Hello.
Oh no. Eh ma la wa, kamadu soke, kamadu wate, kamadu.
Hello, eh to lo ma.
Eh ni suru sa, eh ni konso lo sa. Eh lo shangbo mi sa. Awo onko lo pe, yo tiwa like ke ke wepe, oh, ilé ajo iko, oh, tiye, seriously mo. I don't know, oh, jo di go to di yale no. Eh ma je kodi pe, eh yo ko sho pele, lo ma ke, ke pe, eh pele, mo go ba la ni, ah ah. Eh lo ba, eh go ba la ni, eh, we go to me, eh, to savi baso, oh, you go back to a lo ri, plakomi, no ko. Amo mo opinion wa ni, oh ma mo aydi awa ni, oh ma si no, oh, oh, de posi ko, oh ma ba. Oh no, she to be a lo tu, amo posita, afek bo wa ye, oh, me awa ye ona. That is to say, ah, o koraki la ti va genye. Ah, no petition, no petition. Ah tu wa, oko kompe, lo ri ololo petition. Mo tu pe peti shon ni, wa nona, eke ka sa i ne, ju ba, te po, oh, oh so wipé, o fe ke ni wa no. Ami tu ma che now. Akoli tu kolori sosokomplé, komplé na, komplé na, komplé na, komplé, no. To ma ke mi no, ni mo wa ni, a diati su ni. Eba wo ye ni kongo, a te ni to wo ni lasti, eh ma di wipé, akondé, owa go se ni. Aye ari botou je le ni, lo ne je a ni, every minute. Everybody breaking news, anything. Komar president, eh, yeah, good luck Jonathan. Ono kuti e, ki la e fe, kolo senior Buddha airport. Boya i di, boya boya, and now I go, lorotal.
Oda be. Oda be.
Oti di gobo wa, oye po, oti di we, oti di everywhere. A komar, oso ri social media, abama wa rojo, eh, that's a big money, that's a big money. Eh ba tu soroko, eh mi no pa wí, eh mi che kota, mgo ti a, fe che.
Hello. Ego don sa, mi. Hello. Ego sa, shengbo.
Che ola uko che da.
Lo sa.
Eke kinkro mi ba, ino for now, eh shekoni wipé, da, la ilati soro.
Eh shima, hello sa. Hello. Hello sa. Hello angbo ni sa. Hello sa, eku shesa, eku shema o. Shoni esan, ebo so ke sa. Yes. Owa ti bitonsingwe. Awa yo ba, awa yo ba, ka si gobo kini le, ka ma. Ka sopoti e mi to banchi lowo, gobo wa la ni, o ta chi, ka ma sopoti kimi ji. Ah ni di la, ni boya ba, ki do yo, o sheki ne, o sheki, baba iti da ba, on try besti mo. A oni ala no, kimi ji. Ka tu o le komachin, koto, e ni to batin, to batin sopoti yoruba, ulan sopoti. Eh shekoni. Ah ni di la ti ma, can, ah ni di gobo, le, da on yo so. Eh shima. Gobo wa da on yo so, ya, ni di. God bless you sa. Ah ni di gobo, koto so, he la 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 la. Eh shima, ati god bless. Koto da, focus luri wa, ni we, yoroba nationi, ulan focus di luri. Ah ni di gobo, epe anybody, so wake da. Ko, kuli di shantwa di. Eh shima, god bless. La ba chi soro, ilan o pe, a gobo, ni to batin sopoti yoruba. Yeah. A la on so poti. Very. Ah ah. Alright. In the, da, let, change. Ah for straight eni now. Eh shima. Ah for eight four. Eh shima sa. Ah kuda, kuda, ka, awa yo ba, i ko to, to gwa di, ita iti di ni mi ye. Ama for straight ite mi, kuda, gobo wa da, eh shima, ah, ah, focus luri, kini wa, yoroba ni, na fe li, so, so di luri. Eh shima, god bless you sa, eke ka tu fe lo me la, yes sa. Eh shima. Yeah, ah, ha, oda. Eh iawa, Dr Zabi, eh, adupe koko ni, o wo ye. Belu, a ono, ala yiti, eti she lo lo kon, jo kon. Eh, eh jo, eh ma iti pe wole, eh ma iti pe wole, jo taba tikba ite, ya oni ba ite kon kon, for now. Hello, hello sa. Hello. Eka le sa o. Eka le sa, eh shima, eh shima, eh shedu kon sa, eh sa ri soroni pa pa pa. Turi a chiwa, ashi, siu jo po le. Hello sa. Ah, jo po ye, oda be ye. Hello sa. Eh, eh ma so, eh ma so, ro ni lo, eh ma, ro ni lo. Sa. Yeah. Ah, gori sa, eh ma binu sa, ori pe, e di, eh section petition no la fe de ye. Eh ma binu, eh jo. Eh iyo wa, eh ma iti pe wole, lasiko ye, eh ma iti pe wole eh jo. Turi a oni be pe mo, oni, e sheti, okonso komba iti afè she. Lowo lowo, eh ma iti pe wole, eh jo, eh jo, eh ma iti pe wole, ake yé pada. Eh, eh ma binu, eh ma iti pe wole, ama ke yé pada, eh jo, eh ma binu turi o lo. Eh onti, a okonba iti afè, eh, equalitio tu konti, afè bosilo oloba ye. Oni, oro, eh, five million petition. Five million signature rather. Che moki ya to lo, a ono baba wa soro le kon, a ono baba wa ba, shekule yoruba.
Ode ti, ole gobo le yoruba o.
Ma.
Bambi.
Eh jo turi o lo o. Jila peace on mute yourself, jila mute please. Okay, eh shima. Eh, one eh, eh jo tuwa ni, ilé eh jo. Pe ti gobo mo yorubani, ki she ti e ni kon. Eh jo, gobo ti omo yoruba, kata kata ni. Eh on kon ti a ono yoruba, bele, wipé, ona ba yolele ye, eh ma diya dagula. Eje ke, ah, daro. Ke, eh, aliche, oru shirishon oni, amaga. De bitan lo ye, o she shekuma jo, no koshucho, o she shekudé, ono koshucho tabi me di. E ni to ba be petition le, eje ka tu ya ya, ka tu ya ya, ka buwa no petition ye. Eh, mo feki ya wa kowele, lati, bele, kogi ta ba ni, afani lati be owole. Ni ori etu, ilalé ye, a be owole, wa ba wa soro, koto di pe, alo soro yoroba petition. Five million signature ye. Che moki ya to ba, ba la fa ni lati be owole. Eh, ama, on fiya on, on kon, on fiya che siwa, lori etu ye. Ama biyon ju, lati no, soria tegon. Fugogo, eh yo mo, bele, kogi. Ta wa ka, kilo ri gumi ya ba ye, eh yo mo ku, ni pa pa ju lo. Wipé, eh, eh, onbo onbo, a ono lande de, shima, eke kinkbe yonju. Ki ma be, iawa, ywole. Ebe onje ke, ju o ko, o ko lo. Eh. Oro yoroba ni soro o, otin, otin dun tu tu tu. Ke yon lo, ke yon je, ke yon lo, eh, eh shimboko. Eka bo si, ori etu, lo ni ma. Ama, be re, eh lo ma, sha gwa ma. Okay, ama afeniye, ama afeniye, shedu ma, okesa re ba, omo ku soro. Che moki ya to pe re, si ni soroma. Oni a ono, afodu sukono ri, petition to lowo lowo. Ari wipé, epi le kogi. A ba ju lo, a ono mo ku. O jo mo yoruba, ti moti ba o be lo kolok. Eh, ote eje beki, shimboko, ilu oni molida ruko. Che moki ba, o to be ni, to je, o ma je gule. Moti ba o be, awa ye gule be de. A ono, isonu, ba o be, e ju mu lo kugo me, moti ba o be da da. Ti yodan, ni lo ju kon, o ju ba ni wa. Che maki a ono mo ko di. Eh, ati bole no, a ono ba, kontu o so pe fulla me. La ono fe lo, pe lué, wipé turi a onu ofo, a ona de, ati o pa che. One eh, eh, koko kobe la, rofa aditi, owa, go tele king paro. A lot of bad money. Eh we bele, do ati dead saloni. What if she do ati ba yoruba, lo shi ba ni turi poti fe wa, la wa she la wa. Lord United Sixties, ni ba to she refrend. Buti le je wipé, etu eka fe, i wo so fe, gobo kon fe, o fe ti ba ba, olo, o be ka le, ba no, tuwa she wa, ni be desate. One je ba de, la omo yorubani, che mokosonu. Oka shadi de, epi re pe, a ono ba le yoruba shemo. Nani ba, i wo feka da wa, shi ba ni turi wati fe wa, la wa she la wa. Si, ona ba yon mo. Eh, jo po yo da o, oda. Eh, eke kinkbe yonju, kinkbe play for a ono, eh iyo wa, eh jo ma binu. Sheti e, ebi le mi lo, mi, mushi. Eke kinkbe play for a ono, ke ma, da wa lagara. Gobo yi, omo ku, si, eh wa ka, kilo ri gumi ya ba ye, ebo ti ya, i be so fuwa. Ebo tu fe so fuwa, eh jo. Turi, to ba pe, boya, oni o tu e ba ton, o ma, o ma na gamba wa ya ka. Eh ma ni a o yoruba, o lo, o kuwa o. eh 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 pro le obukou omokou ki napako abalaje eti bo eh yo mwen koki napako napalaje eh wou ombo ombo ah won la dead yo oni kasa eh competition obostèt ito kudo sa eh o kilo de kilo jawa mokogi kilo selé eh dakwè turi olon eh ba wa sa eh competition eh ba wa sa eh competition bo bo vikini tabawa ni de karo jilé activité c'est c'est karo jilé eh itè wani amè eh te wani eh America eh ba wa sa eh wey di kogi eh yo mwen kogi towa la America eh ba wa sa eh wey eh towa ni kana sa wani eh eh spain sa wani eh seliga eh ba wa sa eh te wani kame eh ba wa sa eh te wani nete miléche eh ba wa sa eh te wani kanada eh ba wa sa eh te wani toubaye eh ba wa sa eh yo mwen kogi eh imo gwa mwen kogi ni mokasoro eh ba wa sa eh wey eh ma deka wouda wabole eh ma deka wouka wabole ni ba toba ni kama sa eh competition wala ti logic oh wakoua wakougi tu lode eh deka sa kama kaka dièmolo ala oni deka kusoukou éru eh yo mwen kogi ala oni deka kusoukou éru ni ba toba dièpè tuto tuto ala oni deka kusoukou éru ala oni deka kusoukou éru ala oni deka kusoukou éru eh jo eh turi olon oh si ala won ba di yo turi wala apè kaka kou nukro nukou éru moturi olé ya ti moté yo tu m'as dièpè ou soumèri oritrisitadi mousoukou soumèri ni obosou oh deka kira yé kwa soumèri ni mouna tou asotimou oh 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 nos soumèri oh nosa mwen yani ni ba tu di ba glouwe oh to di ba wakoua fia wawawam di aso ah frome timo foute ti tèlo wan timo wan butin pa relate to wa lowo eh yo mwen kogi eh 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 jo eh turi olon bo bo vikini tabawa eh sa amokwa la sa bo bo le yo sa tel tel spèt da ni ni le yoba obwa loslo ah wa na in sa eh yo kou tu wou sa oh ni kaka lowo wou kogi ni orie sa kaka eh dakwè mofia alon won ba di mofia mokogi mofi di oh si ala le mofi di eh te bansian obi mofi di eh te bansingèt soumèri di eh ba wa sa eh ba wa sa eh competition yo eh sa yo oh du moun tuwa oh du moun tuwa eh sa yo tu lode eh turi olon mofia alon won ba di chaud abè ni ba ka won mwen won mwen wan yé wan yé university wan yé yé poli wou wesh oban pa oban di la won ba tou dièpè oh ti swa wonan kawonan fè yo na to sa won ba oni moun go ah won yé konan sou ah won ba olon jou ah won ba tombe ah won ba tou nesouton tu m'as tinta do do tu m'as tou nesouton ah won ba kouwa di ni kogi oh eh jo eh turi olon koube ini koube yé eh yo mwen kogi bo bo vikini tabawa eh itè wani saudi arabia bo bo yé eh te wani eh india bo bo yé bo bo vikini tabawa eh turi olon jammi bo bo yé eh yo mwen kogi towa wani damme di eh te wani eh eh New York no eh di sa wani America eh di obwa yé ni moun pe yo eh te wani repatriate eh sa eh shum eh for any good year kiya magba wala coco eh eh me konfer okonfè tawalo okonfè siwa ni bere pa kokon ni me pay ikuton pa ou du beni ou ilon pa funi tava soni orinè di yoruba loni ifiné ti moun tounpa woy yo ifiné kogi ni oh ifiné kogi eh basu omotoba shipa mi yen eh yo mwen ni beki dièbawa lori gomeni akba yé eh di di eh basé but yo ba balotikogi obalo wala yé kogi olé lou on le lò du medji on se pa gogo tamon alon ije o shelé oh ni woyoubà coco ni pare eh loa shelé olon lori petition tou wan laye eh iyewa eh deka eh sa risom koko fwa lori gegébi alékweni obdis lori petition yé obdis ta fe fwa la laye kishé yé ti ah woy ti sa la fe fui abi eh lolo kou mais lolo kou tabi ni bo ni won be petition low ilé kola fe sofuwa la laye onti ave sofuwa ni we pay petition tin low onti low soukida da ah wotoba fe koulou makou ah wotoba ma koulou makou ni na wotailé yoruba ni odabé koko oni kouga gogo pata ah wotou wou di la rokou tu ah wotou wou ni mi yaleta ah wotou wou jo kosibi konosorogo ah wotou wou le lodi opoko non ni no le ah wotou wan ni nou yé mi ashale abini beki di tabi large ti moun wibé ilé yoba oni durose ah oni ba oni nira yé eh ah wala le le yoba hehehe wa shiwa bi o sheshe shou ju lagba na lowo olon woba petition yé ti la soké tu m'as boshé la soké tou non ke ah nejou five million osinto gurujumbé abani twenty million thirty million ofyawa simi eh itè wani da aspro shewa lowo yé lori opolo koto wani da aspro aniu sa in petition yé notailé ma woupa wotou wale non lancha fù beni tu m'as ti loba da eh itè wani da aspro opolo opolo fè lò sile lassé America ti olé low turi life insurance eh koma ba council opolo opolo ti lassé tèyè be okoné jèn sa le loka kimbè pa tombar beri eh well order of facebook moni lassé explanation yé a little bit for more clarification itori kwe bubo media ni ah believe we and the platform wa lassé eh communicate jadi la lay facebook koni petition wa petition wa odaduro gegébi and independent link but bibo gwa shemo kwe oro le yoruba tansoy opolo kwa bayé ofe jeko bossi biba bawa fatay obonlibidou shiso ma repeat again opolo kwa bayé kofe jeko bossi yé ya moumen lassé linke mon oroti pastor adeboye enox oni jo sonde kwe even eighty percent in common Nigeria oh wonyo diè lowa eh bomi da da the eighty percent